Mr. Biddy, Mr. One will call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Silvers?
Hammuss?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, so first we have a couple of resolutions. One would be the cigarette and tobacco permit for the Family Dollar stores of Iowa. And this is a store that's going to be opening in the old Hy-Vee drugstore, I believe. So looking for approval of the permit for the sale of cigarettes, tobacco.
Some of them.
Moved by Boyer to approve.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Silvers?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Okay, great. And next, Kevin, I'm going to ask you to talk about our amendment to the McClure Engineering Contract.
Yes, Sharn, originally there was a contract signed with McClure, of course, to do hydraulic flow studies for the city in preparation for what will later be our decisions regarding sewer improvements of conveyance and facility. We ran into a little bit of a glitch there because basically we didn't have the extent of rainfall that we needed during the study period, 90-day study period, that would give us good numbers for what would be called a gully washer, two-inch event, over 100-year event. And so in this contract amendment, would number one be included $33,529.50 for an additional month, which we've designated October as the best month to undertake that because of just the amount of rainfall typically we see in October. And also, an inclusion is on this amendment of $66,548. And that would be for continuing the intent of the original contract and completing GIS data immigration, smoke testing throughout the city to sort of try to indicate what kind of a level of stormwater induction we're getting into the system, part of our inflow analysis. That sort of will lead to what will be a better capability of judging what kind of contamination in the system we have, sort of in relation to the amount of capacity we want to build out in our improvements at our facility. And of course, the size of the conveyance pipes that will be needed to transport material. So I would entertain any questions about that. There are some other things that we also discussed, I think that Darren will be going over in that meeting, and there are some other decisions coming up on our sewer activities, some pretty big decisions, very important decisions. But for now, we just wanted to concentrate on being able to get through our first stage here, which is flow monitoring and hydraulic studies to be able to indicate to us kind of, on a general level at least, where we're headed for our improvements.
I have a couple of questions. Number one, regarding the flow, well, the smoke testing. I thought we had done a lot of this previous. Did we not, did we just do it with our own crew and it, just for smaller things? So it wasn't all-inclusive?
It wasn't all-inclusive. Correct.
It was not all-inclusive, and we will actually, going forward, and we'll be doing it over time with our own city engineer and our own crews as well. Mel, would you like to speak to that?
I guess, I just feel like the public needs a little more information on what has been done previously and why we're having to spend this additional money.
Previously, the areas concentrated on were mainly Central Business District, areas around the courthouse, I think they did some along Business 34. And there's kind of two things going on with the smoke testing, McClure redoing it. One, when you find, smoke takes the easiest way out. When you find the major things, such as this Roosevelt wreck was one that they found during the most recent, or the last, smoke testing. There was a few intakes on the square that were found. So once you remove those, and if you redo it, you can find, I'll say, more minor ones, but several minor ones might add up to the same capacity as the larger ones, if that makes sense.
I guess.
Different stuff might get found, I guess.
Yeah, my comment is, the majority of the smoke testing that was done in the downtown area was targeted to find roof drains that were attached to the sewer lines. And the smoke testing that'll be done this time around is to find cracks in the actual sewer line that lead to outside areas, like your storm sewer intakes, or straight up through the ground, because the ground is so dry right now, it's got a lot of cracking in it. Smoke can be bubbling up out of somebody's ride of lane, out along the edge of the road. So you're going to find areas like that doing this type of smoke testing. It's going to be in a lot broader area, rather than just doing little shots here and there to try to figure out if this tall building has all of its drains going into the ground like they did at the Roosevelt Rec Center. They're going to look at, we've got that disconnected now. Where do those feeder lines that run off from the Roosevelt Rec Center, how are, what is their condition as far as putting smoke into a line? And if that's coming out in the intake on Burlington, or if it's coming out, like I said, up through the ground, in between one manhole and the next? You're going to identify those with this work that's going to be done.
Okay. Great. And also, in, I think, in the residential area previously, maybe that was just a, maybe there wasn't smoke testing, it was just looking to see where some of those drain pipes went off the roof, if they went down into the ground, then they were suspect, so.
Right. There was approximately 580 to 600 homes that were identified where the downspouts went into the ground. And of those, there was a very low percentage that actually went into the sanitary sewer. A majority of those were outlets under the ground somewhere, and we had required the homeowner, we notified him by letter, and then we had asked the homeowner to show our people where those locations went out at. Mike Pesch went out and was involved with that program, and it was all run through French Reniker. Dave Fredericks took care of the letters and the mailings and set up appointments. Mike had his phone number in there so they could set appointments up directly with him as well.
Great.
And through that, we've gotten all of those homes that were identified that way taken care of, either taken off of the system or left as they were, where they're dumping out on the ground.
Okay. And then I had just one additional question. The $33,000 for the additional month, I don't really understand what the process is. I'm sure there's, there must be a lot of equipment they have to bring in to do that. And so I guess my question is, is there any kind of weather-related break that we get? I mean, what if October comes and we have no rain again? I mean, it's just an expensive endeavor. It seems like, isn't there room for some kind of negotiation of, if we don't get any rain, then, you know, their equipment hasn't been used at all? I mean, I don't know. I don't know what's possible. But it just seems like, I don't, I'm not interested in throwing another $33,000 just down the drain.
Yeah, I agree with that.
With no rain.
No pun.
Down the drain with no rain.
I find that completely agreeable, and I, there was discussion about that with us. And essentially, the rain gauges, there's kind of two pieces of equipment involved in this, rain gauges and, you know, flow meters, as well as taking the information that you're gathering from that and, you know, putting it into an engineering analysis. And didn't get very far, you know, with being able to get a free month out of that. I, I want to say I wish that originally we signed a contract that was dependent upon events rather than a timeline. We didn't do that, but it's not typical that folks don't do that, though. Typically, there is a timeline involved there. But I'm not going to anticipate that there's going to be, if we don't see that rainfall in October, there's going to be another $33,000, simply because of the volume of work that we've already done. I just cannot imagine that, you know, we would not be ending our payments for this kind of a thing with this payment. I understand one, I understand one amendment, you know, to that, because the engineer, they do own, that's the thing, the engineer owns this equipment. It's their gauges, their meters. And there's a price that comes along with the use of those things and the work that it goes into doing the analysis. But I just can't imagine that we would, if we don't get the kind of rainfall, have to pay again. And I'm going to insist that we don't, of course, from our perspective, because it would be outrageous. I'm with you on that. I think that's certainly, to do this amendment is enough. In other words, yeah.
But do we need that in writing with them somehow?
We've talked about it, and I, it's kind of like a wait-and-see right now, but I'm like, I just, my folks are not going to want to, you know, in our conversations, I've just kind of indicated, look, the city's not going to want to pay another amendment kind of cost like this. I just don't see that being able to be something that happens. And I mean, there's a, to say that this is not a lot of work, it is a lot of work. What we're doing is a lot of work, but it is, it pales in comparison to the amount of engineering work, ergo contractual agreement that lies out there. In other words, doing the, you know, anti-degradation report that we were talking about, the other two main elements, final facilities report that lead up to actually engineering our improvements. That's where the real, you know, so there's something out there that would, if I'm, being a former businessman at least, I'm going to be, that's going to be in my mind when we go into that other process. I don't want to be gouging my, you know, consumer with little charges along the way. But I don't think we're going to be able to get away from at least paying one amendment related to that study, because we can't lease the equipment anywhere else. I mean, we're not going to have to pay for it.
And I did ask them a question about that, and what they said during that meeting was, they're going to monitor before they actually come down and set all of the, reset all the gauges, or whatever the technical term is for that. They're going to monitor the weather to make sure that before they do that work, there's actually a forecasted event.
Event, yeah, or serious.
Before they, because I did raise that question.
The event they were talking about is a one-year rain event, which is an inch, close to an inch and three-quarters here during, how long a time period, a 24-hour time period?
Yeah.
So it's not a deluge rain or anything that they're looking for. We've gotten all of the events that we need to model with except for the one event. Now, Tony asked a really good question when we were in our meeting about modeling that is done, computer-generated models. And the problem with projecting what that would look like into the data that they have right now is it's, it isn't good enough to base, you know, $35 billion worth of work off of over the next 20 years. You really do need to have accurately what's going to happen at this particular manhole, and this one, and this one. And we're talking about 17 different locations that they're doing these monitorings on. And they don't monitor just at the top if something's coming out. They're monitoring at the bottom, they're getting the water at the top, which will tell them the time it takes for the water to go from here up to here, and when that spikes, how long it stays at a particular level, and when it starts to go back down through that one event.
Yes, you're looking at three different levels of flow, what would be normal conditions, and then slight rainfall, or some rainfall, and then, you know, big event of rainfall. What is going, in the worst-case scenario, kind of big event of rainfall that you would normally see, you know, a two-inch rainfall approximately, you know, you see a couple, three of those a year. And you want to build to that. You want to build to that. And I mean, we're already going to get maybe 20% increased capacity in the facility and the conveyance improvements that we do, but then you're also going to, in eliminating this contamination, this inflow infiltration contamination, stormwater contamination, you're going to get a little more increase from that of capacity. But you want to, you want to build to something that's real, and, you know, under all conditions.
So is the equipment here now, and it's just a matter of?
The gauges are installed, but they don't have a metering device on them, basically.
Okay.
So we're not testing, we're not checking what that flow is, but those, they're installed there, and they're there. It's not a big event to install them, but, you know, they got to come down, a few hours, get those in place. You're renting them for a 30-day period, hopefully we'll get more than one of those significant events during that time, and get a little bit, you know, one would do it, but it'd be nice to get two or three. And I would, you know, point out, too, that the other amendment inclusion here, that I called it an inclusion because the $66,400, or $548 for the smoke testing and other things, that was agreed to in the original contract, because of course, it's going to be a part of a study like this. And we eliminated, Mel and I, in discussion, just basically eliminated doing flooding events, basically where you would, you know, plug a stormwater intake and then flood it and throw some dye in there, and then put cameras in, and then let it go and see what happens to try to locate specific combination system elements left over from days gone by. We eliminated that because we felt like, on the long term of the next five years, three to five years of us undertaking these major improvements, we could do that in-house. We do that with our city engineer and our city staff, save a lot of money doing that. And the only amount of events that were in there were three. And we're thinking to ourselves, wow, we need about 15 of those. Would be nice, something a little more indicative of system condition than just three. That just doesn't, didn't seem like it would be worth the money in that effect. So we, we brought that down from, you know, being around the high 80s, I guess, down to 66, 548.
And so we will just be paying this out of the regular water and sewer fund, correct?
Yes, well, that's, that's where our discussion kind of moved over to the SRF. When we were talking about the SRF amendment that I've been discussing with Mel, and we've been moving forward toward that, because what we are looking at, I think, is that we don't have a significant amount of income in our waste, you know, water fee structure to want to cash all this stuff out. And we've got about $525,000 roughly left over our current improvement to pay out. And leading up to the public hearing process, you had a situation where the city was looking at 4.6 million, 4.6. All the way down, there's ample paperwork trail here that says that's what we were looking at doing in a, in a public hearing, and doing, as far as borrowing from the SRF to do the present improvement. But when we went in to do the public hearing, it was 4 million. So there was, I think there was an element of thinking that maybe we could cut what would be some of the costs of doing the improvement we're doing right now. Now, that hasn't turned out to be the case. I think we've been very good. I think our city engineers done a really good job, and we've been good about holding the cost down. But on a relative level, being able to eliminate a certain percentage of cost from a project this big and this impactive, 600,000 out of 4.6 is, is just generally not going to be possible. So I don't think we've had any great failure there. It's just that we underbonded, we underborrowed just a little bit here. So that's where I was heading at in the emails that I sent you about doing the SRF amendment, that would push that back up to 600,000, because I wouldn't want to recommend that we go forward and use all the money that's in that fund to pay out for what's left for the project, as well as taking on some new engineering stuff that we've been talking about, which are, will be bringing forward a little bit later, which include the fee-rate studies in water and wastewater, which I think we all think are pretty important. And, you know, a stormwater study, which we've got a pretty decent price on that one from McClure. So I.
But for right now, to answer your question, we have the money, and we have the money, and we have those funds available to us now.
Yes, we do. We will be using them, and then we'll be replacing them with amendments to the SRF. We have the funds, yes. I just don't want to be without them, going forward long-term.
Okay.
I'm like, the long story a little bit longer, maybe. Sorry, but.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, then entertain a motion to approve the amended contract with McClure Engineering.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Silvers. Any other discussion? And Kevin, can you just state the amended amounts again in those two areas?
The amended amounts for flow monitoring and hydraulic modeling would be $33,529.50. And for smoke testing, data immigration, and field testing, existing video examination would be $66,548.
Great, thank you. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Silvers?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I know that's primarily what we came to meet about tonight. I was going to be, I'm going to be out of town next Monday, so I won't be at the board, the council meeting, but I did want to bring you up to speed on something that we've discussed before, and that is pursuing a grant for facade improvements in the downtown. And this is a grant through the Iowa Economic Development Authority. It's a community development block grant of $500,000 that would be utilized to help subsidize facade improvements with property owners in the downtown. It comes out of the Iowa Economic Development Authority because it's an economic development strategy. It's a big part of the Main Street program, but it's available to non-Main Street cities as well. I think it's been available for about three years. I think there are about nine communities in Iowa who have utilized this. And what takes place is that there's actually a facade easement that is essentially granted to the city. And as the administrator of the grant and the decision-maker for the funds that are utilized, property owners enter into an agreement with the city to make the improvements that are recommended. The, the money that would be available through the grant would be a match. And there'll be a local committee that will determine the amount of a match, and in some cases, the priority of where those dollars are spent, because the grant will call for the most visual impact on the square. So there, you always want to spread the money as, to as many willing participants as possible, but at the same time, you want to be sure to do the buildings that have the most visual We've been working with Area 15 Regional Planning on this grant. We did a pre-application back in the spring, and as part of that, we had to approach the property owners in the downtown to tell them about the program, and also get them to sort of sign off on their interest in the program. And there were quite a few people who did. I think we had probably 50 property owners that, maybe 40 property owners, I think, that signed on. Within the two-block, say, one-block area of the central square, and then one block in each direction, there are probably about 72 buildings. So we're not sure how many would actually be participating, but that's something that we would get to if we were, you know, fortunate enough to receive the grant. So there are two requirements before we present an application in October. One is that we do a review of the facades, the conditions of the facades, and that's done by a professional. And an architect with some background in restoration work is usually used for this. And last Friday, I had two representatives from RDG and Associates who, as the firm out of Des Moines, that did our streetscape design and streetscape work. Had spoken with them, they've worked with several communities on this program, so they came down, we just had a meeting to talk about what, what they've done in other places, what it would entail, and walked the square a little bit, and they did a little bit more after that. And they're going to be putting together a proposal for us, because this is part of what we would have to submit with the grant. We would have to submit some review, it'd be more of a general type of review of the condition of a lot of the facades, and what may be an estimate of the work that would be needed. There will be some fees, some engineering fees. In order to do that, they're going to be providing to us an estimate of what they think that would be. So hopefully, within the next 30 days, we'll get that. So that would be a part of what would be necessary for the grant application, and the other would be to have a committee appointed in order to oversee this. So I did it the easy way, and I went back to our last group that did this when we were doing the streetscape design, and many of the same people who were on that committee have agreed to continue and work with us. So I have a list of seven members of the community who've agreed to participate in this, should we, should we be awarded the grant, and I think they'll do some work ahead of time as well, as we get this review from RDG. But before we go over the list of names, I just invite any questions about, about the grant.
The worst-case scenario is we pay for the engineering and we don't get the grant.
Pretty much. You don't get the grant, but you've, you know, it's, what's interesting is, you know, we've, we talked about this with property owners as much as seven years ago, and we said that when we were doing our street improvements and the new sidewalks in the downtown, that we felt that this was a public-private partnership, and that we would hope that they would work with us on rehabilitating some of their buildings. And people are pretty agreeable to that. So I don't think it would be work that would be wasted. I'm just not sure we would get as many people participating. You know, you may get a dozen property owners who would say, great, I'll take these recommendations and I'll, you know, do my work. There are, you know, the Chamber has a program, low-interest loans for this type of work around the square as well, so that could be incorporated. So worst-case also is providing people who are probably willing to do that, some direction for it as well.
So about how much are we looking at for the engineering?
Don't know. I'm waiting, waiting to see what comes back, so I have no clue.
So all you're really asking us for is to approve people that you're going to assign to this board?
Yep.
And then empower them to move ahead with discussions with the engineers, and then develop what this estimate is and bring it back to us?
Well, I think they'll probably be a part of the dialogue, but I think I'll bring that directly back to the council, Darren. I think at this point in time, since we're going to be getting that, I would say, within the next 30 days, we'll bring it directly back to the council. I don't think I would involve so much the committee with that. I think most of the work that they would do later on would be.
They would get the cost of the engineering services, or we would get the.
The cost, yeah.
The cost of what it would take to do the improvement project in order to apply for the grant.
We're going to get both. We're going to get both in their report.
So they're going to go ahead and do the engineering and.
Well, it'll be.
They're already going to figure that we're going to pay them, no matter what.
It'll be, no. Actually, what they're going to provide, right now, what they're going to provide to us is just an estimate of what their, what their full services would be.
Right. They're going to create an engineering services agreement, and then we'll have a chance to approve that, depending on what that is, whether we want to go for that particular amount or look.
Right.
Another direction.
And when you see the work product that comes out of one of these types of efforts, it's not really engineering schemata for the facade so much as it is pictorial, you know, it depicts what the, what the improvements ought to be. I have some experience with this, because I, in my experience on the western side of the state, Woodbine is one of the communities that have kind of done it. Just an incredible, incredible improvement on that town, that they did the whole downtown. Of course, Apples and I, we're a bit bigger, you know, smaller, smaller community, but very, very appreciable work was done there, and it's made a heck of a difference. I think Bloomington.
Bloomfield.
Bloomfield was the example nearer to here that was done, and I understand it's going very well for them there, too.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll see, we'll see what the costs come back at, and, you know, if we want to, how we want to participate, how we want to try and put those funds together. When we did our, our other study, we did ask the Economic Development Association and Chamber to go in with us as well, and I've spoken with FIDA about that, indicating to them that we would potentially seek their partnership in this as well. But I think it'll, I think it'll just be a great, you know, additional improvement to our downtown, and kind of a capstone to what we've done over the last seven or eight years down there. And I was just very pleased, when we were getting the signatures for the, for the pre-application, I walked the square myself and talked with a lot of property owners, and you learn about plans that they have already, or, you know, their enthusiasm for a program like this. And I think, I think it's going to be well-accepted, and I think our issue might be how we make the decisions to spread the money around.
Yes, and those who don't actually engage in grant funding part, still get work product. It gives them ideas that can, you know, they still get the work product from it, you know, so it's not like everyone's empty-handed.
True, very true. Yeah, even if they're not, right, even if they're not selected. And some properties, it will determine what the share will be. Could be a 50/50, it could be a 60/40, depending on how far, you know, we want to see the money go, and what the tolerance is for people, you know, participating. And then, let's see, then the committee itself will also make a determination about, again, about that visual impact and where, you know, where those dollars could be spent. So there may be a building, there may be a property where you're spending $50,000, there may be another where you're spending six to do some painting and an awning. So we'll, you know, we'll just see how it all. So, we'll, you know, we'll just see how it all comes together. So, for the committee, two members of our beautification commission, Karen Haring and Katie Van Pelt, Jerry Long from French Renneker, who has, who had been involved in the last project that we had with RDG, Ron Blair, Mark Schaefer, our local historian, Chris Davis and Bob Troeg, both property owners on the square, and Sarah Cochran, who also was a member of the Chamber Committee when we did this at the last time. So, at this time, I'd like to recommend those members for approval for the downtown facade restoration committee.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. And then, Darren, are you going to report on your committee, or are those just notes for us?
The first part, we did have an action item. We had recommended that we bring this to the council, and we had voted to recommend that we approve the engineering agreements. The second portion of this report discusses a little bit about the opt-out policy, and we have determined or said that it should be up to the department head to dictate that policy and create the policy and procedure for how the opt-out program is to be run. And then, we also had a discussion about meter alternatives. There's been quite a bit about it in the newspaper, but the committee has handed that off to Kevin at this point in time for him to work through what's going to be reviewed for that. There's a lot of stuff out there. This was one particular company that these two gentlemen were talking to and were in discussions with, and it's time that it moves from private citizens to the city, if there's going to be any movement towards this. So, that's what our committee did, and that's what was, I had my typed-up report.
Great.
In addition to that, I would say that I do have a meeting with one of those citizens tomorrow. John Brown's coming in to talk to me. Obviously, maybe he'll bring another gentleman with him as well, and I'll be talking to them about some of the stuff that they've been looking at with that particular engineering firm. And I did, at the mayor's advice, go home and do an extensive Googling search after our meeting. And, you know, there are, there are a lot of companies involved in doing this kind of tech, engineering companies, and just, you know, typical companies you'll see out there. Cisco, for instance, did, was pretty heavily involved. And so, I'd say there's a pack of them, but, you know, what's the best option? I don't really know what the best option is yet, and the comments I made in the paper, I think, were more directed at trying to illustrate that council wants to vet it fully, but we just really don't know where we're going yet. It's a period of discovery completely, I guess, on the option of where we're at and how much it would cost.
Right. And again, this is, this is a complete change in direction, once again, from where we are currently at. And it would also add another layer of information that has to be monitored and followed by staff up front, as well as our staff in the field. It's not, it's not an easy decision to make at this point in time, because you're talking about, you were moving on a path that you knew was going to cost you several hundred thousand dollars in order to complete over a 20-year time period, to another one that's going to cost you several hundreds, thousands of dollars, maybe even a million dollars to change to, to try to do that over a 20-year time period. And you've lost all of that initial 10 years that you've put into it to this point. So, these are, these are very heady decisions that we're looking at for the water side of our utility. And that's where this money has to come from, is from the water side of the utility.
And currently, we are continuing to install touchpad meters. If we were to go with the fibered option, obviously, a touchpad meter would be necessary regardless for a backup, in case that system were to go into some kind of failure situation. And we are not currently ordering any more of our Neptune meters, because I think there is sort of, there is a decision, and of course, at our next board meeting, I guess, we'll look at that, maybe, or the one after. But there is some element of a decision about RF, if we're to stick with it, what kind of meter is that? Is that continuing to be a Neptune meter? Or is that switching to something more like the census meter that many of us have discussed? So, really, so, but we're not ordering any more RF meters right now. We are continuing to install the touchpad meters. That's kind of where we're at right now, in a static sort of position.
Thank you, and thanks, everyone, for coming to our special meeting. So, if there isn't any other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton. Second by Boyer. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.